Go ahead and hold this meeting to order. It is Thursday, December 28th, 6:30 PM, at the Swisher Library. This is the second regular council meeting for December of the Swisher City Council. Also barring a blizzard or some other natural disaster in the next four days, this will be the final meeting of the 45th City Council in Swisher. And of my administration. As luck would have it, so go with us. Um, currently state roll.
Okay, um, Cody Puccio.
Here.
Rebecca, excuse me, Rebecca. I'm Roder.
Here.
Mary Wincott.
Here.
Very much. Thank goodness we have a forum. Item number one, as is tradition, is approval of Ty's agenda. Do I have motion to that tonight?
She should approve, start.
I'll move by Rebecca, second by Mary. Any discussion on that? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. Seems the ayes have it. The ayes have it. Agenda approved. Before we get into it, I just want to make one quick report to the council. Apparently based on the bylaws for the Johnson County Metropolitan Planning Organization, our representative to ECOG serves until the next executive board meeting in late January. So I'll continue to whatever it's worth, certainly not capacity. And otherwise, I'm beginning to transition things over to Julie. So item number two, citizens' comments.
Um, Dave Wilson came by and he wanted this, um, to present it to you, okay? This is from, it says, "With our greatest appreciation, we hereby honor Christopher Taylor, Mayor of City of Swisher, and Emergency Management Commission Member. We recognize your dedication and commitment of 10 years of service." It's from the Johnson County Emergency Management Commission. Say it again.
All right. We just want everyone to know that I specifically told Dave that I did a lot of planning.
That, that was really loud. That's what he brought to me. Thanks.
Other citizens' comments?
Um, I just want to make a comment that I heard, I've heard a lot of nice comments about Willow's Widow Dinner for everybody in town and appreciation to like all the nonprofits in this town for like, say like Swisher Legion, the Willows, and the Men's Club and everything for all they do for the town for, you know, for no profit or nothing like that. So I just thought it was really nice that Willow's Widow's Dinner, Widow Dinner was really nice, I guess.
It is nice, thank you. Any other citizens' comments?
Uh, Mary. My name is Bruce Sexton, Fire Chief. Jefferson Monroe Fire Department took over in July. Other representatives, Captain Ben Campbell, Assistant Chief Darren Cass, and Deputy Chief Eugene Beard, who you're all familiar with. First off, I just want to thank you for having us here. We are here today to, what, not only introduce ourselves as the new members, the leading members of the department, but also to express our concern with the discussions surrounding the repealing of the water tank ordinance. Uh, we just, a couple of things we wanted to make known here. All across the industry, we're facing staffing shortages. Uh, we currently have 15 members capable of conducting structural firefighting. We carry about 6,000 gallons of old water on three trucks. Uh, it takes us about eight to 12 minutes to get on scene, uh, and also our mutually companies that are 18 to 33 minutes out. So, uh, with structural firefighting requires a lot of people, requires a lot of water. Uh, we do carry an adequate amount of water. However, the typical house fire ranges from 6,000 to 100,000 gallons. Uh, this water tank ordinance is in effect to assist us with that for the protections of the residents that we are contracted to protect. So, um, the developer in question that this discussion is based on, we did have preliminary correspondence with him. We have not recently. We understand there's this 100 feet outside of the current ordinance. Uh, we're willing to continue those discussions and figure out how we can come up with a solution. However, I do not feel that repealing of the ordinance or discussing of repealing the ordinance, uh, is the proper way to do about it. And that is solely for the protection of the residents that will be living in that subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we are all but one future council member here too.
Okay, okay.
This is good.
We'll meet, we'll meet in a little later.
Sounds good. And good to meet you and thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Is anybody aware of where you came up with that on repeat? Because you had repeated.
The developer, or?
And Melper and then Cody and me even repeated it on repeat.
I repeated what he was stating to us. I mean, he said he plotted out the areas of the tank. Every house in the development was going to be within the 1,000 feet, but then there was like 100 feet short of it. Um, so that's where.
For phase one.
For phase. Yeah.
Right. For phase one.
So basically he was saying you could put every house within 1,100 feet of the tank, but.
Ordinance has been done.
Right. Any other citizens' comments? Good. Anything else to you?
No. I'm just looking forward to it.
Me too, man, me too.
I appreciate the support the councils give into the department. I hope it continues. Um, this town is going to progress. One of the things that we do note on the, on the Fire Department is lack of available housing for our people. We have approximately 13,000 people live outside of the city limits. Not only the city limits, but outside of the county. And that, that affects our, so I would encourage developments in this town. Not the high end. We need to get some, uh, properties that, that are affordable. It seems like commercial properties are, well, one just sold here and down within the last week. And there's probably another we're going to sell there. Perfect. And, uh, the council should, uh, consider making available, uh, some kind of amenities like parking and that kind of stuff for the increased things. Some businesses in this town do not meet the minimum standard for, for parking in this town. And, uh, also I'd like to remind the city clerk that Knox Box Ordinance.
Oh yeah, it's in my pile.
So, one of my, my, my things, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Yeah, we're proud of Knox Box Ordinance and thank you for bringing that to us way back when. It was, it's good additional. So, any other citizens' comments? Have you received any written communications about items on Ty's agenda?
Oh, I don't think I've been discussed. Yeah.
Okay. In that case, we move on to item number three, setting a public hearing date for City of Swisher Ash Tree Removal and Sanitary Sewer Tree Removal Project. And the idea was to, as of last month, or last meeting, to combine these together to hopefully get a lower quote.
Um, and I did want to add one other house to it that's not yet on the property. Let me go on. Um, about, I have a second. For, it's an ash tree that's in the city right away that's dead. And it was for 639 Swisher View Drive. We are going to add that to the plan's by agenda.
Is there any objection from council to add that tree to the plan?
No. Questions to set a public hearing to January 8th?
Okay, there's a motion.
Sorry.
Okay, Adam. Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion on that? Um, those in favor say aye. Those who say no. Seems the ayes have it. The ayes have it. That's a little hearing is set for January 8th. Item number four, consideration of sewer project bids. These were opened at 11:00 PM this afternoon and the engineers made a recommendation. Present that.
Um, at 1:00 PM, we had seven responsive bids and the lowest bid was Dave Schmidt Construction So, we reviewed them for completeness and accuracy and found it to be, um, to be a successful bid. We're recommending award as it is approximately 13.3% below our opinion of probable construction cost and represents competitive pricing for the work.
Very much. Are there any questions about the bid that the engineers are coming? So council has a couple of, um, ways to approach this, either approving that tonight, or if they wanted to, they could postpone the date to consider those, to consider that particular proposal to be January 8th. Sort of, council, which direction you want to go?
I see no need to. Which is January 8th?
No reason to postpone?
No. They're responsive, but they're underneath engineers estimate, competitive bids all around according to the bid tab. So.
Okay. Is there any objection to that particular course of action? In that case, that takes us to item number five, a resolution awarding contract.
We have to do according to Dorsey and Whitney.
No, no.
We have to do number four, which is consideration of bids that were not taken the other proposals.
So we did page two.
Number four. And it's a whole bunch of paperwork.
And you've got three or four different.
Yeah. This is, the minutes of it, we have to say a motion at.
To set a time to consider it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is tonight.
So we would be searching, is that going to make any sense if you're not a parliamentary procedure nerd? We're searching for a council member to move that this meeting be adjourned to right now at 6:43 at the Swisher Library, at which point we will consider such proposals. Does that work on you?
Yes.
We have to adjourn this meeting?
Not.
It doesn't mean adjourn, adjourn. It means.
We're turning this.
To.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded. The mayor put the question on motion. And the roll being called, if you please.
Okay. Cody?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
If you, the ayes have it, whereupon I declare the said motion duly carried and the meeting was adjourned to said time and place.
Thank you.
At which point, we then move on to item number five, the actual resolution awarding the contract. Which we would want a council member to introduce that and move, uh, move approval or adoption of that resolution.
Motion to award contract to Dave Schmidt Construction?
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Last call for discussion, please. Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, Cody?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you very much. item number seven, go to the aye. Clear that motion duly carried and the resolution duly adopted. Do we need anything else? Rebecca?
As far as no, no.
Okay. I mean, that should cover the attached resolution. Let me just read out one there. Document, okay. In that case, we'll move on to item number six, set a public hearing date for consideration of the proposed fringe area agreement. That's one of the E and Z in mid-January, so we want to have a public hearing after that on January 22nd.
Motion to set public hearing to January 22nd.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call on this?
I don't know, I wouldn't think so.
I mean, we did feel pretty responsive. Okay, um, all those in favor say aye. Those who say no. Seems the ayes have it. The ayes have it. However, I started purging procedures for my brain. Item number seven, approve renewal of alcohol license for Dance Floor, which is attached.
Motion to approve alcohol license to Dance Floor.
Second.
It does need to be seconded. Let's have a roll call, please.
Okay, Cody?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Rebecca?
I'm staying.
Mary?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Four ayes, we're extension due to conflict interest. That license is approved. Item number eight, approve payment to Corning Construction to reinstall the salt shed roof building.
Justin's was going to talk to him on a court call today about it, I guess. Um, so I suggest that we try to just talk to Justin on the phone. He's home sick. Would that be okay?
It's fine with me, the objection from council.
Because I haven't had him talked to, so let me go with that. I'm getting there.
Can we just move to the January meeting?
Um, that's up to you.
Was he saying there was some kind of issue or something?
He did more stuff than before. Um, so, and I asked Justin if he could kind of explain the bill more because I thought it was a little hot.
I mean, did they do more than we asked them to do?
Is the guy advised the bill?
Not really. Not really. It's just the total amount.
No.
Okay.
No, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that way.
All right.
I would say we postpone dealing with this till next meeting.
Does anyone want to move approval?
And can you ask Justin for that to be advised out rather than what he provided us?
Yes.
I'm not seeing any of the description that will fit outside of what we thought were given, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Taking us to item nine, a resolution appointing treasurer. Phyllis, who has been our treasurer for many, many years, is stepping down in what is a variation on a theme, but fortunately Molly Walz is.
Which is Molly Walz is right here, right? The recommended to the president's committee, because some of them don't even know Phyllis.
But, uh, yeah, treasurer is one of very few positions that a city is required to have by Iowa law. And so, thank you so much. I was really concerned when we were losing Phyllis that we were not able to run anything else, so. Um, are there any questions?
Or? It's another way to double check in. We're still getting written out, no matter what, every audit, because we don't have enough people to handle all the finances, because they want, we would need like five different people. Oh, seven, excuse me, okay. Well, either way.
It's the next item.
Okay, yeah. So, we're just not going to have that. Most small towns never have those. That's just what you know.
Motion to appoint Molly Walz as the treasurer. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion on that? The discussion on the resolution? Last call for discussion. Roll call, please.
Cody?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
The ayes have it, that resolution's taken. Thank you again.
Yes, of course.
Love your board.
Thank you.
Okay, related to that, item number 10, review, audit, review. Because we do get audited. And as Tonya mentioned, they always ding us for the one thing. There were two findings this year. They said that, you know, all of our bookkeeping is good. We followed all of the rules in terms of, um, filing the paperwork we need to file, meeting the deadlines we need to meet. We have done all of that. The two findings this year, segregation of duties, as Tonya said, which they list out at least seven different things that are ideally done by different people and.
It's one, right?
Right. It's one, exactly. And I did, I talked with Rochelle about this and she's required to talk to the mayor about it. And we had a good conversation and, and I kept saying, you know, yeah, we get dinged for that every year. And she kept pushing back saying, it's not a ding. It's just, it's an observation that this is something that ideally would be handled differently, but as she says, it's difficult within American, within a number of employees. Uh, the other thing that she found was deficit balances of $759 and $8,120 in the special revenue employee, employee benefit fund and the capital projects, sanitary sewer project fund respectively, and.
I want to explain that.
Yeah.
The $8,120 is where we get the reimbursement for Esra.
Right.
So, we spent it, but we haven't got the money back from them.
Right. We need to accrue the cost before we can get reimbursement.
So, I says, but we're getting the money. We just have to wait to get it. She says, well, you still have to transfer the money and borrow it from something else. I'm like, really? So, next time, future, I says, but it does make sense, even though, but either way, that's what they have.
And just as a reminder, the capital project fund, that's just a separate line item. It's, you know, it's in the same bank account that the rest of the fund is.
So, and all of these are. And the, I learned this on the, we do employee benefits through our property taxes. Okay? We were only short $759 compared to what we expected and what we had budgeted. The sum 112.
The revenue from that tax levy.
Property tax levy, $759. I did not know that I had to transfer that over from general to cover that. I was hoping that we could make it up the next year, whatever, but you can't. So, in the future, it'll be, make sure it's a zero balance at the end of the year. So that was my fault.
You had something you could correct.
It's overdone. Yeah. It's overdone. Yeah. But it's noted, so that way we don't have it in the future.
So, yeah, I should have mentioned, this was for the fiscal year that ended June 30th.
So, yeah. But, yeah, I argued on that $8,120.
Yeah. I think this is the first time we ever got written up for, you know, an account.
Yeah, if you can actually have, you can have negative funds.
Right.
But, I guess not to her, so.
Well, and I, I have it in my last audit too.
Yeah.
And it was, it was new to me as well. That was the first year I'd heard it too. Especially the capital funds. Because you want to track those expenses separately and, like Tonya said, you pay them and then you get reimbursed from Esra.
And I hate to transfer.
Or any grant that might be coming in.
Transfer it back over once you get the money, but we'll do what we have to.
Maybe in the future then we keep that in mind.
Well, definitely.
Make sure of that.
My, my comment to Rochelle Thompson would be where she noted that the city should investigate alternatives to eliminate these deficits. My question would be, what are her suggestions?
I mean, honestly, when I was talking with her, she was not concerned about this as an indicator of any, you know, she volunteered that this was a matter of, we're awaiting reimbursement on one thing.
Sure. I want to ask her. I just think any recommendation should be followed. That's a suggestion.
Any questions about that? Does council need to just review this or do you like a motion accepting or a critical?
I think we accept it.
Okay. Second.
And usually moved and seconded. Any additional discussion or questions for Tonya on that? I mean, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'll get it published in the paper, the notice of it. Yes.
Otherwise, I mean, once again, this is 10 years, at least 10 years in a row of Julie Sterling caught it, so, thank you again, Tonya.
Yeah, we'll just keep it that way.
So, if you didn't catch it, the ayes have it.
Stress is on.
Need to break the streak.
Stress on, yeah.
Okay, so, I heard the ayes having it, so I would catch you there. All right, item number 11, advertise for communication coordinator, because Julie canceled two positions at once and wouldn't want to, she was allowed.
And I did put, Julie sent me this thing, um, job description that she created. I, we have the one that we adopted before. And then I have it in your, it's not in your separate, I printed it up for you guys. Because I think it's there till four. And she suggested this for the communications job description, which we can approve if you guys.
Or change.
Yeah, whatever, at the next meeting. But, um.
I like this job description because this role, we really didn't know what we were doing when we first started it, but in the past, like, year and a half, you take on that role, so.
The hardest jobs are the ones that you have to make up as you go along.
And so we could go ahead and, um, at the next meeting, approve this job description to replace the other one. But we can give this one out to people to look at. Would that be okay?
Yeah. Any objection from council on that?
I do want to let council know that while I have to step down from this position, I'm allowed to assist unpaid. So Tonya and I have already discussed to make sure that legal things are getting posted. The newsletters will still go out in January, while we wait for applicants. So, probably won't be as much as I normally do, because I'll have other higher priorities, but I'm allowed to keep helping Tonya until this position is filled, because it's a lot for her with her transition.
Thank you for looking into that.
Yeah, I appreciate it, because I'll just get to the point in fact. I don't.
She just wants to post, because she has no time.
I'll get there. Not bad.
So what does council think in terms of wage?
I mean, I told you guys that a year and a half ago when we were doing budget, that's where I think it should start at. It's just a easy part-time job, but it would be great for somebody who wants to know more about how cities work, because you do learn a lot.
You recommend starting paid at 15?
Yeah, partially with the budget upcoming. 15's a really good pay for a five-hour job.
Definitely, like, typical for the type of, of a job. Need motion to approve.
What do you want?
Posting at that rate? I mean, what's an effort?
Second by Cody. Any discussion on that?
Do we want, do we want to just put a specific, like, 15, or do we want to put, like?
I'd start at 15. I put on it.
Because I, because I know when we started interviewing people and whatever, there may be some that have a little more, if they have a little experience at it or something like that. It's like everything else.
I'd let them ask for it.
Yeah, I wouldn't offer up, because then they will ask for the high range and it's, it's such a minimal part-time job that I think you can get applicants.
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't say any job duties. I mean, with expertise, yes, but until it's a bigger position, I just, I don't think it would be necessary.
I know when we posted the first time, it was 17 hours, what you came in at. How did we advertise that? Was that?
I saw it on the website.
But I mean, for the dollar a minute, was it 15 to 17, or was it just a straight 17?
Straight 17.
Hmm.
And I, if it was a part-time job, I wasn't going to argue with pay. I've never argued with part-time job pay. Most people don't. Full-time, that's where you negotiate.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on that? Let's do a roll call, please.
Okay, Rebecca?
Aye.
Cody?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Get that out. Item number 12, present certificates of appreciation to council members Guttenhoff and Nigro for going off the council after eight years for Rebecca and 16 for Mary. And just outstanding as is tradition. Seems so small. Okay, item thirteen and potentially fourteen, we have a request from new city clerk regarding the offered wage. Sort of up to council on how to consider this. There are a couple tricky parts of this, because a lot of the initial discussion, both about Shelley and about some of the other applicants happened in closed session, their interviews. So, I try to keep that in mind, things that are set in closed session. If it's your own point, you're welcome to make it again. If you are talking about something somebody else said, please try to keep that as confidential as possible, otherwise. Shelley, do you want to sort of introduce your neck on?
Sure, yeah, so I, I did accept the position and tried to negotiate at that point. And I just kind of felt like, you know, with, I think it was Cody, Rebecca, and Mike were, were in my interview.
I was in.
You weren't, who was here?
Aye.
Adam, I'm sorry. Did you have a hat on that night, Mike? Anyway, you know, I, I think a full council is better to, to visit with about this. I did accept, you know, the wage that was offered. I went and talked to my employer the next morning, put in my resignation, and they were devastated. They are, threw some more money at me, wanted to change my position. And, and I'm, I felt, I feel like I'm worth more than what you offered in the first, the first time around. You know, I do have seventeen years of experience doing this in a few different communities. You know, I think Tanya is at where I was requesting your wage right now, right?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, twenty-seven. And so, you know, I have just as much experience as Tanya does, so. I, I don't like to do this, but, and also, the, the, one of the other main points also is, I was, I'm requesting an additional week of vacation time, but willing to wait until July first. I mean, I, you know, I, I don't want to bite the hand that feeds me and I, and I won't take advantage of a good situation. I don't expect to be taken advantage of either. So, I'm willing to, to wait for that week until July first, if that, if council would be willing to work with my wage a little more. Because right up to the day, you know, when I was crunching out or leaving the office, they're like, you know, we, we'll take you back. We want you, we don't want to lose you. I'm like, well, you know, this is, I love, I love this kind of work and I want it to work, so that's my request.
And you want to use the first week within the ninety, right?
Well, if, I, I mean, I would like to be able to. I have a new grandbaby that was born on December seventeenth. And mom is needing, my daughter is needing a little extra help transitioning to her first child. So, if I can take a few days, again, I'm not going to take advantage of a good situation, so I, I respect the same. With other previous positions, I, I did start with, you know, a couple of weeks of vacation. It wasn't anything out of ordinary to request this kind of stuff.
And the vacation, and when you get awarded the vacation, has been a discussion topic, not just for your hiring, but in previous positions too, so it's definitely not new information for council. So, what does council think? We have a resolution already, having said we're ready at twenty-four an hour. Would we need to repeal that and replace it with a new resolution?
So, I was not in the interview.
Sorry, Cody.
No, 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 that's totally fine. So, last meeting was your first, I think?
I just came, yeah.
So, like, just interacting with you, that meeting and this meeting, I've been extremely impressed with your knowledge on all this. And I think our town needs somebody strong to take over for Tanya, moving into this next phase. New mayor for the first time in, what'd you say?
Ten years.
Ten years. You know, a new council. We're losing Tanya. So, yeah, I mean, for me, I want a great candidate and just in the two hours of interaction, I mean, you blow me away. So, I will say a motion to approve, or how do I phrase this, with requested modifications.
Which is twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven dollars per hour with the vacation.
With the additional week of vacation.
Starting immediately?
July.
Or?
Yeah. July first is July first.
Yeah, that's funny.
Yeah.
I will compromise on that.
First, and then can use her ninety, her other week of the, within the ninety days.
And in the first ninety days, you'll be here, right?
Yes.
So, it's like...
No, it won't be a problem.
Tanya, are you good with that? You got it?
Yep.
Does everyone understand what it's just?
Mom, may I repeat it?
Yes, please.
Twenty-seven dollars per hour with an additional week of vacation starting July first. Can use the first week of vacation, which we offer already, within the ninety days of probation. It chooses.
And everything else already the same as the usual? Okay, so it's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Discussion on the resolution? Discussion? Last call for any discussion on this resolution? Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, Cody?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Thank you, the ayes have it. That resolution is approved. And thank you.
Thank you.
So, are we starting July first then, or what day?
What day we start? You don't want me to start until July first?
No, Jan.
I'm like, wait, what's happened?
So, that means, that means time you're going to be here till August?
I'm already gone.
Is the office closed, mother?
Yeah. How about Jan or your second?
Thank you.
Oh, mercy. It's all right. I was here last night for this meeting, so we can just kind of...
I almost supposed to, you know, I sound good. Thank you, Shelley, for bringing that to us.
I appreciate it.
It's always nice when you're, when you can be upfront about those concerns.
So, I gotta, yeah, I'll call them and let them know, nope, I'm not coming back. I look forward to you coming, so I'm excited.
We're gonna pretty much, um, we'll discuss that. I would, I'm gonna be working on the budget. Well, I'll be training herself too, but, so I can focus on the budget. She knows, and then we'll go over it, but we gotta get that done.
We have, we don't have the budget being set yet, do we?
No, we will at the next meeting, we'll set it. There's some changes in what they want done now.
Typically, they're in game, right?
And, yeah, there's more stuff we have to do.
Right.
Yeah.
Of course, there is. Okay, um, that takes us then to the final item for tonight, comments from the mayor. Come to it at last. And this is, the decision not to run again was something that my family and I made last Thanksgiving. And it seemed so far away at that point. But it's, I suppose it's a lot like parenting. The days are short, or the days are long, the years are short. I did have a couple of things that I wanted to say. And to be honest, I wrote a lot that seemed to make sense and observations on where we were and where we're going. I'm sitting here and I'm just overwhelmed with gratitude for the opportunity that I've had for the last ten years. So, I think instead of all of this, I will share, share a quote from twentieth century poet, activist, and moral philosopher Audrey Ward, who wrote, "Tomorrow belongs to those of us who conceive of it as belonging to everyone, who lend the best of ourselves to it and with joy." And there had been so many joyous moments in the last ten years that, that I just, I can't express. But in lieu of this, you know, Trent always used to say that thanks are never a bad idea. I've given some talk to that, to, Jim Chris Sines isn't here, I had a really nice bit written about retired Roman general Cincinnatus, who was called from his farm to serve the republic. It's very good. Adam, I don't know you all that well, I'll just offer the best piece of advice I ever got. That if you're doing anything meaningful, some people are going to get pissed off. Don't take it personally. Cody, ninety years ago, people in this community got together and made the biggest change that this city has ever seen when they decided to actually become a city. And one of the names on that charter document was Pugil. And you've got, you've got a family legacy to uphold, and it's been my pleasure to have you on the council last week. Rebecca, within about fifteen minutes of that first Sunday's planning committee meeting nine years ago, I knew you were going to be a phenomenal asset to the city. And in nine years, you've never given me reason to second guess that, so thank you very much. Mike, I said some of this last meeting, but you've done more work as mayor pro tem than some mayors I know. And which maybe says something about, you know, mayors, but but I've been just incredibly grateful that you've been willing to step into that role and also to negotiate on the city's behalf, the Cedar Rapids, to serve on however many committees and to help with all of the little, the hundred little tasks that go into keeping a city running. Thank you so much. And I'm so pleased that you're continuing on. The city will benefit from your wisdom for another, another four years at least. Mary, you reminded us last meeting of just how much you've done for this city. You've done just about every job that the city has to offer. You've done them all well.
I haven't, plus no.
Probably, you know, inter with Justin and really round out that resume. But, you know, I think honestly, there's very little that the city has accomplished in the last quarter century that doesn't have your name attached to it one way or another. You know, on a personal note, you gave me the exact right piece of encouragement at the exact right time, way back when. And it is not an exaggeration to say that I would not be here at all if it weren't for you, so thank you very much. Justin and Laura are not here. Justin, as I've said many times, came into just a mess and had to pick up a lot of pieces and pull together a lot of loose threads to just get the city moving again, and has done that very well. We're very fortunate to have Justin. The story I always love to tell about Laura is when she got the state library in Iowa to drive down here from Des Moines and sat in that office over there, and she walked him through a binder arguing why Swisher ought to be allowed to file for accreditation during an accreditation freeze and talked him into it. And as a result, Swisher was not only the first new public library to be accredited in Iowa in a number of years, it was the first public library, period, in Iowa to be accredited under the new current standards. And it's because we have one of the best library directors in town. Julie, you know, we, we basically threw a laptop at you, said, we need to communicate better, fix it. And you did. And, and that's phenomenal, as I said, telling us what we needed to do. And we didn't know what we didn't know, and that's been incredibly helpful. And of course, when literally no one else in town wanted my job, including me, you stepped forward to serve.
You just made it sound so awesome.
Sure, never a complaint of me. So, thank you so much for that. My family's not here tonight. My kids have gotten used to it. I carried my son around, and he was one year old, in a car seat, going door knocking that first, first time around. He's in sixth grade now. My other kid was in kindergarten and they're in junior high. They put up with me not being home for dinner, being away at conferences. Incredibly patient. I hope that if they take anything away from it, it's their duty to their community in whatever way, to, to help build and strengthen their community. And then, of course, my wife, lovely wife Vanessa, who is also not here tonight, because when I first said ten years ago that I was thinking about running for mayor, she said, well, okay, that's, that's great, but I hope you don't expect me to ever come to a city council meeting or anything political that, and among her many other fine qualities, she is loyal and true to her word and has never been to a single council meeting, so I break that streak now. But I have just been, I've been so incredibly blessed with the people that have had my back through all of this. So... There is one more official piece of business before we adjourn tonight. And hopefully, everyone who's keeping score recognized that there was one name left off that list, conspicuous in its absence. And that's because for the last year that I've been thinking about how I wanted to do this, after a year of it, I cannot come up with the words to express my appreciation for this individual and everything that they have done, that not only for me, but, but for the city. They have done more for the city than I think anyone will ever recognize. I think I probably understand what they've done better than anyone else in town. And I can tell you, in all honesty, I don't appreciate them half as well as they deserve. They've been to me a mentor and a confidant and a friend. And I wouldn't have made it a year, let alone a decade, without their help. So, how do you, you know, thanks are not enough for that. Fortunately, for the last four days, I am still mayor, which is not without its perks and means I'm not entirely without options. So, my final official act as mayor then, write the office of the mayor a proclamation. In recognition of her many years of selfless service to this community and its residents, and in appreciation of the professional example she set for her peers and for all the city staff, and in gratitude for her rendering unto the office of mayor outstanding guidance and advice beyond the call of her official responsibilities, and reposing special trust and confidence in her integrity, prudence, and ability. Now therefore, I Christopher J. Taylor, mayor of the city of Swisher, do hereby award Tanya Kikhajek this special commendation for extraordinary service. And title her to all rights and privileges which the city council of Swisher, Iowa, may now or hereafter by resolution determine. And furthermore, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty-four, to be Tanya Kikhajek Day.
I don't think they want a picture of them.
Maybe later.
Just crying.
All right.
I take it one big advice when I started, I says, don't ever take it personally, because no matter what, you're not going to please everybody. And that's just the way it is, so.
Thank you all so much. Not just, not just in this room, but there have been so many people in town that have supported me so well over the years. Ten years. Line of blank.
And don't, I don't have any others that I can say.
I'll work it out somehow, I'm not sure.
But that does bring us to the end of tonight's agenda, which means motion to adjourn with the order.
The move, second?
The move by, move by Nigro, second by Gutenhoff. All ayes in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All ayes opposed, please indicate by saying no. Thank you, the ayes have it. City council adjournments are maintained.